Okay, everybody, I'm gonna start the meeting. I call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 health emergency, this meeting is being held via video conference in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business. This board meeting is being streamed live on YouTube on the district website at www ebnet.org. In addition, members of the public who wish to provide comment during the good of the cause of the public portion of the meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL, meeting ID and password you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your requests. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a whole. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notices are provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening and welcome. We're going to start out tonight with our superintendent's report. Dr. Waleski.
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. In some form, we are all participants in the worldwide reaction to the senseless death of George Floyd and how we move forward in a positive, productive, and respectful manner. As Superintendent of East Brunswick Public Schools, it is my responsibility to catalyze the words and ideas for formidable anti-racist, anti-bias, and anti-hate change into actionable solutions. We are a district of excellence. That is one of the reasons why you decided to move to East Brunswick. While excellence will always be our pursuit, so shall our strengthening of an inclusive culture in our schools. Our work is not static, and change for the sake of change is not good enough. Our professional development and curriculum work this summer will have a focus on inclusiveness and equity. In spite of the budgetary constraints we must overcome, this board and administration has never wavered from committing resources that improve and sustain an environment that reflects the humanity and dignity of each individual. But it goes beyond money. It must be a core belief in how we treat every individual. It is my commitment that EBPS will not only communicate those beliefs, but it will be a non-negotiable expectation that we model behavior that is anti-racist, anti-bias, and anti-hate every day. East Brunswick Public Schools is proud to partner with the East Brunswick Regional Chamber of Commerce and Brunswick Square Mall for the first ever MC Foods 2020 Battle of the Classes, an East Brunswick Community Food Drive competition to celebrate the 2020 graduates of East Brunswick High School. Student leaders from EBHS planned to organize this community service event together with EBHS Principal Dr. Michael Vanilla and Mr. Ronald Lichtenberger, the President of the Chamber of Commerce. The kickoff was Saturday, June 6, and 4,500 pounds of food were donated. There is still time to contribute and support your favorite EBHS class. Food collection occurs in front of the Brunswick Square Mall near Panera every Saturday throughout the remainder of June, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Any donations from Lawrence Brook Memorial, Hammer Shuld, and Bound will be credited to the class of 2020. Donations from Frost, Irwin, and Churchill Junior High School benefit the class of 2021. And the class of 2022 is supported by donations from Central, Chittick, and Warrenstorfer. And additionally, the East Brunswick Education Association is working with Dr. Vanilla and each EBHS Class Council to purchase $2,000 of food per class for the MC Foods Battle of the Classes. This EBEA grant also includes funds to purchase signs and a special gift for all graduating seniors. The total value of the EBEA grant is valued at $12,000. The EBEA is honored to support the class of 2020, all EBHS students and the community. So let's see which class will win the inaugural MC Foods 2020 Battle of the Classes. Last week, East Brunswick teachers dropped off $3,000 worth of books to elementary students needing reading material. This was a pride and public education grant from the New Jersey Education Association and the East Brunswick Education Association, so thank you to them both. We have been informed by the State of New Jersey that the Grab and Go program for meals in East Brunswick Public Schools will end on June 30. As a result, the last meal pickup will be on Monday, June 22. There will be seven days' worth of meals handed out instead of the normal five in order to cover the days through June 30. And although the school year is ending, learning doesn't stop. Please visit our district website at ebnet.org for a variety of summer learning opportunities where you'll find information about how to extend learning at home as a family, offerings from the community programs, and reading opportunities through East Brunswick Public Library. Our last day of our most unusual school year for all students will be Wednesday, June 17. And I want to express appreciation to our entire EB school community, all of our families, and especially all of our students and teachers during this unprecedented learning and teaching environment. I wish each of you a safe summer and sincerest hopes for opportunities to enjoy the things that make each of you happy. And finally, we have been monitoring Governor Murphy's continuing allowances to limitations on gatherings for graduation beginning July 6. After a few final touches, we look forward to finally sharing our plans to recognize the accomplishments of the class of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waleski. On tonight's agenda, you'll see that we will be celebrating many wonderful achievements of our students. But first, the board would like to recognize our 2019-2020 retirees who represent a variety of positions, including secretaries, custodians, instructional assistants, teachers, bus drivers, and child nutritionists. These retirees have devoted nearly 900 total years of service to our district, and for that, this board is truly grateful. Susanna, I think you need to unmute.
It's within your control, Mrs.
Sorry about that, okay. So thank you very much, and I am excited to kick it off and just, you know, want to wish congratulations to the entire group. Janet Oblaf, Instructional Assistant from Hammer Shuld Middle School, with 20 years. Grace Ariano, School Aid from Frost Elementary School, with three years. Selena Barkott, Instructional Assistant from Central Elementary School, 15 years. Robert Burner, Cooperative Education Teacher from East Brunswick High School, 26 years. And James Borden, Technology Education Teacher from Churchill Junior High School, with 11 years. Congratulations to all.
All right, now continue on with Sue Brewer, Art Teacher at Bound Monroe, 29 years. Alan Broadman, Social Studies Teacher at East Brunswick High School, 28 years. Jolene Buckle, Bus Driver at our Support Operations Facility, 12 years. Florence Caraturo, in Child Nutrition at East Brunswick High School, 13 years. And Joanne Cessaretti, Early Morning Aid with Community Programs, 20 years. Congratulations.
It's my honor to recognize Laura Chabak Tremblay, Speech Language Specialist for the District, 32 years. Jennifer Chow, an Instructional Assistant for East Brunswick High School, 20 years. Kathy Conjuista, from the Admin Building, 16 years. Audrey Domond, an English and ILS teacher from the high school, 21 years. And Margaret Donatello, School Aid at the high school, 21 years. Congratulations all.
I would like to congratulate and thank each of our retirees for their dedication to our children. Leslie DeJack, Instructional Assistant, Chittick Elementary School, six years. Gabriella Engelhardt, School Aid, Memorial Elementary School, 20 years. Ellen Geiser, School Nurse, East Brunswick High School, 25 years. Margaret Nelson Coy, School Nurse, Hammer Shuld Middle School, 24 years. And Brian Howard, Custodian, Churchill Junior High, 29 years. Congratulations.
We're excited for you, but this is actually a loss of the district. I will continue. Donna Forte, Elementary Teacher at Memorial Elementary School, for 27 years. Mary Grant, Secretary of the Administration Building, been with the district for 11 years. Kathleen Holland, an Instructional Assistant at Memorial Elementary School, for 19 years. Tanya Kalas-Gorinsky, a French Teacher at Hammer Shuld Middle School, gave us 20 years. And Kathy Cowell, Elementary Teacher at Frost Elementary School, for 31 years. Beth, I'd love to see you all, thank you, and we appreciate your service and your commitment.
Great, I'll continue, and first and foremost, thank you very much for all your service. Enjoy your retirement and know that I'm extremely jealous of the following people. Laura Lung, Secretary for 24 Years at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. Kathy Moreno, Secretary with the Administration Building for 20 years. Norine McLaughlin, a Bus Driver, Support Operations Facility for 10 years. Charles Monpremier, Bus Driver, Support Operations Facility for 11 years. And Rena Paris, Instructional Assistant at Memorial Elementary School, for 22 years.
It is my honor and privilege to introduce the following retirees. Michelle Pickett, Elementary Teacher at Frost Elementary School, for 19 years. Rob Ryder, Custodian at Lawrence Brook Elementary School, for 17 years. Donna Reinhold, Elementary Teacher, Frost Elementary School, 19 years. Susan Santoriello, Special Education Teacher, East Brunswick High School, 18 years. And Hannah Feké, Accountant at Administration Building, 15 years. Congratulations all, thank you for your service.
And I continue with honoring these wonderful, dedicated people who have been such a source of pride for our district for so long. I also wish you well and luck in your retirement. Anne Marie Schneider, School Nurse, six years, East Brunswick High School. Sheri Scott, Kindergarten Teacher, Warrenstorfer Elementary School, 44 years. Susan Showerman, Elementary Teacher, Lawrence Brook Elementary School, 34 years. Carolyn Sowell, School Aid, East Brunswick High School, 20 years. And Sharon Swickis, Special Education Teacher, Warrenstorfer Elementary School, 23 years.
Now it's my honor to introduce the following retirees. Karen Timber, Child Nutrition from East Brunswick High School, for 24 years. Renee Bayman, Instructor-Assistant Ressess, East Brunswick High School, for 19 years. Rosalie Berneda, School Aid, Forest Elementary School, for 24 years. Kimberly Wales, Special Education Teacher, Churchill Junior High School, for 15 years. Ronika Weiss, School Aid and Early Morning Aid, Forest Elementary Schools. Congratulations to all retirees, and my best wishes, you and your family, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Danny Rigerio for doing all the prep work for this, our way of saying good luck and goodbye. And now, we come to one of our favorite nights of the year, recognizing our students. We have nine resolutions to give out, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a resolution. I asked for a motion for resolution items 2 through 10 so that I don't have to interrupt each one with a motion and a second. May I please have a motion for resolution items 2 through 10? So move by Lee Wu, second by Jeff, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Our first resolution of appreciation is for the 2019-2020 Board of Education Student Representative. Whereas Rachel Lobo has served as a student representative on the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 year, and whereas Rachel has faithfully attended meetings, offered insight as a student of East Brunswick, and effectively communicated the Board of Education's actions to her fellow students. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recommends and commends Rachel Lobo for her time and service to the East Brunswick Board of Education. Rachel, you have been an absolute pleasure. You have given so much of yourself, your passion, your energy, your insight, your laughter. You've shared with us, you've given us a real sense of what it's like to walk in our halls as our students. We greatly appreciate it, and we wish you the best of luck and stay in touch with us, please.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, I really appreciate it, and I enjoyed like this, these meetings. I would feel like I learned so much, and you all like helped me grow a lot. And I'm obviously like gonna come back and say hi whenever I'm back from college. And I'm also really looking forward to all of you meeting Tony, who's the new board liaison, because he is incredible, you guys are gonna be so impressed. But thank you all so much, not only for helping me grow up, but for helping all the students at East Brunswick and the staff. We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, Rachel, congratulations.
Okay, Vicki, so ready for the Rutgers Waxmen? Yes, okay.
Yes.
So it is my pleasure to provide the resolution of commendation for the 2020 Rutgers Waxmen Scholars, whereas 17 East Brunswick High School students participating in the nationally-recognized Rutgers Waxmen Scholars Program, in which they focused on the DNA sequence analysis of genes and have had their research published on the National Center for Biotechnology Information Database, which disseminates biomedical information for the better understanding of molecular processes affecting human health and disease. And whereas scientists from around the world will be accessing the published research of these students for their own research purposes, and whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the students' hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local, state, and national recognition to their school, the district, and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Shruti Shah, Magna Thikapat, Michelle Chung, Liliana Cantillo, Michael Sun, Abdur Muhammad, Sophia Drolia, Eric Way, Margaret Lynn, Alyssa Wu, Vishali Umayalan, Safdar Mir, Shreya Rajaswaran, Paramita Das, Sahil Mahhotra, Rachel Yan, Sarah Adams, and their advisor, Ann Sinelli. Congratulations to all.
Barbara, ready when you are? You need to unmute.
There we go, thank you. Whereas our PTAs spend countless hours supporting our 11 schools and more than 8,000 students, contributing greatly to their school communities and helping promote a positive school culture, and whereas our PTAs fundraise extensively so they may gift technology and playground equipment, fund mini-grants to teachers, provide scholarships, and so much more.
I don't understand.
And whereas the PTAs generously arrange for and fund special programs, authors and illustrators, music and dance, history and science assemblies, and workshops that enhance and enrich the learning environment for our students. And whereas all those involved in our PTAs are wonderful examples for our students modeling good citizenship and the importance of doing one share to make the world a better place. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education gratefully acknowledges the incredible support of the PTAs and their dedicated service and devotion to students and staff. Thank you to Bound Monroe PTA and President Vicki Weir, Central PTA and President Lisa Velino, Chittick PTA and President Anna Daza, Churchill PTA and President Wanda Miller, East Brunswick High School PTA SA and President Lisa Clark, Frost PTA and President Jamie Wasserman, Hammer Shuld PTA and President Wanda Miller, Irwin PTA and President Nikki Taffelowsky, Lawrence Brook PTA and President Adriani Viscarello, Memorial PTA and President Julie Raffano, and Warrenstorfer PTA and President Sarah Rubenstein. And further be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education would like to extend a very special thank you to the President of PTA Presidents Council and a good friend, Jamie Wasserman, who has supported and encouraged the PTAs in all their efforts.
Thank you. I have a resolution of commendation for the 2020 Future Business Leaders of America. Whereas the New Jersey Future Business Leaders of America is a student organization helping to build important career and business leadership skills that are necessary in the workplace. And whereas East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club attended the New Jersey FBLA Spring Leadership Conference, an exciting conference that includes both valuable leadership workshops and challenging competitive events. And whereas the East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club did an excellent job competing in all areas. Five East Brunswick High School students placed first in their division. Maria Galkin, Electronic Career Portfolio. Pranav Udeshi and Dennis Ang in Entrepreneurship. Eric Way in Administration, and Gavin March in Political Science. And now therefore be resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends the winning FBLA members Maria Galkin, Pranav Udeshi, Dennis Ang, Eric Way, Gavin March, and their advisors Nicole Kenny and Caitlin Shank for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations.
I have the commendation for 2020 New Jersey We the People. Whereas at the New Jersey We the People 2020, the citizen and the Constitution competition, students testified on constitutional issues and simulated congressional hearings, demonstrated impressive knowledge of the Constitution, exhibiting the ability to think critically and express their ideas clearly and articulately. And whereas following rigorous preparation, 30 East Brunswick High School students in the Advanced Placement Institute for Political and Legal Education, or APIPL, class placed first in the New Jersey We the People 2020, the citizen of the Constitution competition, for the 31st time out of a possible 33, earning the class the opportunity to represent the state at the national finals, an intensive competition held this year virtually. And whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the students' hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local, state, and national recognition to their school, the district, and the community. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes Neha Abdehni, Benjamin Beharlius, Sophie Brown, Nanya Chandra, Lorenzo Curciano, Arjun Deepak, Andrew Flatt, Jolie Harmon, Amasha Giratni, Caitlin Marquez, Rishi Minderata, Simran Mukhi, Shereen Sadhu, Jacob Stern, Pranav Udeshi, Kyle Wang, Andrew Yun, Dennis Ang, Kelvin Jeng, Ryan Clark, Hishan Dalau, Krish Desai, Sayon Kim, Lucille Milligan, Sia Mukhi, Joseph Ramdari, Abir Rashid, Nami Sonikap, Melindi Shah, Millie Trussler, and their teacher, Dr. Alan Broadman, who will be dearly missed, and their coach, Mark Laundrie.
Resolution of commendation, 2020 NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band. Whereas following a rigorous audition process, and one East Brunswick High School student was among the top students musicians from throughout New Jersey selected to participate in 2020 NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band. And whereas this selection requires a commitment on behalf of the student that result in many hours of intensive practice, and they successfully auditioned into the top assemble for the state, and this achievement culminates in a performance with the All-State Symphonic Band at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And whereas this honor, a tribute to students' talent, artwork, and dedications, has brought local and state recognition to our school and the district and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that East Brunswick Board of Education recognize and comment Hannah Lee and his teacher and director Brian Taft. Congratulations.
Well, the resolution commendation for the 2020 New Jersey Music Educators Association Young Composer Composition Contest. Whereas this competition sponsored annually by the New Jersey Music Educators Association recognizes the accomplishments of student composers by providing an outlet for their critique of their original music. And whereas four finalists were selected from the entries to present scores and recordings of their music and be interviewed by the NJMEA Conference that was held in February. Emily Ta's composition for Concert Band Syncopation Circus earned first place in the competition. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Emily Ta and her teachers, Marjorie Le Presty and Dr. Arvin Gopal. Congratulations.
Next is a resolution of commendation, the 2020 Regeneron Science Talent Search. Whereas Lucy Zhao, a senior at East Brunswick High School, was recently recognized as one of 300 students selected nationally for the 2020 Regeneron Science Talent Search. And whereas Lucy's entry resulted from a study she completed while a student at Stony Brook University's 2019 Summer Scholars Program titled "The Computational Development of a Novel Class of Boronic Acid-Containing Chalcoids and Cyst-Restricted Combresc-
and Cyst-Restricted Combust-Statin A4 Analogues for Tumor-Vascular Disruption." This project is important in combating cancer by reducing blood flow that feeds neoplastic growth. And whereas the top 300 Regeneron scholars and their high schools were awarded $2,000 each. Whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' talent, hard work, and dedication has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Lucy for attaining this incredible honor.
Heather?
Sorry, I disconnected for a moment. I was concerned I wouldn't get back. I have a resolution of commendation, the National Center for Women and Information Technology Aspirations in Computing Award. Recommendation, whereas the National Center for Women and Information Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing honors ninth through 12th grade students who self-identify as women, gender queer, or non-binary for their computing-related achievements, and encourages them to pursue passions. Whereas award recipients are selected based on their aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing where they demonstrated how their computing experience, computing-related activities, leadership experience, tenacity in the face of barriers to access, and plans for post-secondary education. This award recognizes high school students who identify as women for their computing-related achievements and interest as a part of an effort to encourage more young women to choose careers in technology. And whereas two high school students, Laura Kai and Kayla Wong, was elected from high school applicants across the country for their outstanding aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing as demanded by their computing experience, computing-related activities, leadership experience, tenacity in the face of barriers to access and plans for post-secondary education. And whereas Laura Kai was a national winner, and Kayla Wong was the state winner. And whereas one East Brunswick High School teacher, Danielle Nessie, received an honorable mention. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' and teachers' talent, hard work, and dedication has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the Computer Science Department, the district, and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Laura Kai, Kayla Wong, their teachers, Haim Cohen, and Danielle Nessie.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
A wonderful group of students that we are proud to honor. And indeed, we are proud to honor every single one of our students for their own successes, their own beauty, their own stories. We are so proud of all of you and so glad to be, play a small part in all your successes. Any other board members have anything to say? Or shall we move on with the rest of the meeting? I'm not seeing the entire screen. Bernie, I don't know if you can fix that so I can see all the board members.
On the top, gallery view. Yes, that's something you have control over.
Yeah, no, I had it.
No one's waving their hands.
I think it was a sign. I had Jeff on my entire screen. It was like a sign. Okay. For the good of the cause of the public. Video Remote Conference Access. As a reminder, members of the public who wish to provide comment during the Good of the Cause for the public portion of the meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves. Public participation shall be extended to residents of this district, persons having a legitimate interest in the actions of this board. Public participation shall be limited to three minutes for each individual duration. Before I ask if there's anyone wishing to address the board, I believe our attorney, Matt Giacobi, has a few words he wanted to say.
Good evening, everyone. The public portion of it is not very back-and-forth dialogue. Because we're in this virtual format, what we're going to do is we will ask each participant to list or make their statements to the board. At the conclusion of all of the statements, it's at that time that Dr. Valesky, the superintendent of schools, will respond to the various inquiries or questions or provide information. We don't do that to be rude. We do that so that we can have a full understanding of what all the different questions are. And often there are repeat questions. This way, we can then answer them succinctly at the end of the public portion. So we don't engage in a back-and-forth, but what we do do is we do listen to all of your comments and questions and statements. And then Dr. Valesky will respond at the conclusion of the public portion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Bernie, is there anyone wishing to address the board?
I see no one having sent a chat message requesting to speak.
No one.
Here we go. We have Ning, who is requesting to speak. So just one moment. And if you would kindly unmute yourself. Okay, you are unmuted.
And state your name and address for the record, please, unless I can't see a picture of you, unless you are a student, in which case you do not have to give your last name or your address.
This is Ning Zhang. I'm a parent. Just want to say first, thank you all very much for the efforts all these, during this difficult time. And as parents, we really appreciate. Just a little bit feedback. I have two kids, one middle school, one high school. I think what works best is if the teachers may sometimes have more live videos or like the Zoom meetings with the students at a fixed time, maybe every other day or something, rather than just give assignments for their remote learning. That's it. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, would you please state your name once again? I did not get your last name.
Z-H-A-N-G.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bernie, is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
No, there is not.
Okay, seeing none, I close the public portion.
Oh, we have a latecomer now.
Okay, I will let the speaker talk. Could you please state your name and address for the record? Unless, of course, you're a student. You do not have to give your last name or your address then.
Hi, my name is Shi Ai, spelled as X-I, and last name is A-I. I would like to express some concern over the percentage of math proficiency rate at EB High School. We saw it from niche.com. It's only 18%. It's among the second lowest among the 16 schools in the surrounding school districts. So as a parent, I'm shocked to see such a low number for EB High School. So and I hope this would be a wake-up call for our math education at EB to make some adjustment to our curriculum to make us strong again at math education. Thank you.
We have Ann Sang.
Okay, I had closed the public portion, but it is a Zoom meeting, and I know that it's difficult to get the timing. So we will allow the next person to speak as well. Please state your name and address for the record, unless, of course, you're a student. No last name, no address if you're a student.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. My name is Ann Sang, last name Tiazin Tom, Sizin Sam, E-N-G. First name's Ann, A-N-N-E.
Thank you.
I'm a parent. I have one child still in the district. I wanted to echo what Dr. I just had said about the math proficiency. I just wanted to say I noticed in the past school year there has been significant reduction of homework, even at the high school level for math. They become optional. And I simply don't see my child doing enough math exercise. And even at her level, relatively okay, I think. But her accuracy has reduced. I can notice that during tests that there are more mistakes. So I would encourage we revisit the math curriculum and to see if there is a way to improve from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else wishing to address the board?
No, there are no other requests.
Okay.
President Becker, could I clarify about the comments?
I just wanted to close the public portion.
Sorry, sorry.
I would be absolutely thrilled for you to clarify. Okay. Thank you to those who came and spoke. We appreciate it. And now I close the public portion. Dr. Valesky?
I just wanted to clarify for the public. The rankings in niche.com this year, we also noticed right away the scores in mathematics which are reported from the, from our state report card. And I'm going to ask Dr. Bowley to weigh in along with me too. She is the Assistant Superintendent for Academics. But one of the issues that we suffer is we are not a comprehensive 9th through 12th high school. So we are ranked, rated differently because of that. Also, many of our students complete their math work required for graduation before they even get to high school. And students are not sitting for standardized tests. And so we're being penalized not only for a student not sitting for a standardized exam, but for not responding and not putting answers on that exam. So we're being held by double indemnity on those test results. And I will tell the community that those rankings in mathematics are not accurate. We are working to do our own analysis so we can come up with an apples-to-apples comparison. That does not mean that we do not need to improve in mathematics. Now let Dr. Bowley clarify further beyond what I just said.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. That is accurate. It's a different configuration of our high school. The 10th through 12th grade configuration is different comparing it to the other districts, as well as the majority of our students take their state-required graduation assessments in Churchill. So that falsely reduces our proficiency scores in the high school.
So we are working on an apples-to-apples comparison so we can give the community a true sense of where our students perform mathematically as well as in every other area. But that does not mean that we do not need work, and we appreciate the input from the community.
Absolutely. Thank you again to all who took their time out to speak tonight. Thank you, Dr. Valesky and Dr. Bowley. Moving on to the Board of Education items, could I please have a motion for items one and two? I think you guys need to unmute yourselves.
Don't move, Jeff.
Moved by Jeff.
Second, Li Wu.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? I actually had something. I was wondering if Dr. Valesky could just talk for a moment on item number two, which is the required update to District Public Health-related Schools' closure plans?
Yes, President Becker. So at the closure of our schools on March 18th, we had to submit to the county superintendent our plan for a closure of school, a long-term closure, and how we would address delivery of virtual and remote instruction, taking attendance, students with disabilities, English language learners, safe delivery of meals to what turned out to be the entire community, not just children that were identified as free and reduced. All of our facilities and how we would clean them, and our summer programming. And we had to, we were required as we moved through the pandemic to upgrade and to refine our plan, which will be used in the future if we need to close our schools anytime in the foreseeable future, although we're hoping that's not going to happen. But that is one of the reasons too, and I think I've communicated out that our summer programming for this year will continue to be virtual as we begin to assemble a recovery to the 2020, 2021 school year, whatever that looks like and whatever will be mandated by the governor and the Department of Health.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Stane, motion carries. Moving on to our. I'm sorry. Could those at home just please make sure that you're on mute? Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to our community programs agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through eight?
Don't move.
Moved by Todd?
Second, Jeff.
Second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? I actually have another question for Dr. Valesky. Dr. Valesky, what we're doing is we're approving a whole bunch of programs for a virtual summer school program. And I wonder if you could just talk about that for a minute? Because I'm sure a lot of parents are wondering why we're doing it, what we expect the kids to get out of it, et cetera.
President Becker, we, you know, I'm very proud of Henry Gilbert, who manages our community programs, and Mr. Joe Crotchwell, who oversees that as well. They've taken great care to provide engaging virtual opportunities for students this summer. It does not replace the face-to-face, but we really wanted to create engaging programs where students would learn something, they would have some fun, they would be entertained, and to take their minds off of the regular school year and all the things associated with the pandemic that they've had to deal with. So this is kind of an escape for them and a chance for their creativity to shine.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the board? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Post, Stane. Suzanne, did you have your hand up for a question? Or was that an I? That was an I. Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial services item, can I please have agenda? Can I please have a motion for items one through 11?
Don't move, Jeff.
Moved by Jeff? Anyone? Euler? Euler?
Second by Mark.
Second by Mark? Is there any discussion? I would like to comment on item number nine, the gift of the East Brunswick Chamber of Commerce and the Washington Group, the digital message billboard on the Route 18 corridor that I believe Dr. Valesky referred to, how grateful we are for their taking this opportunity to recognize the class of 2020 that we are so very proud of. Is there any other discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
This is Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, except for item two, bill lists pending issuance on June 12th. I need to abstain. I need to abstain on purchase order number P two zero zero three two.
Unnoted.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to our human resources agenda, there's one item. Can I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved by Li Wu.
I'm sorry, second?
Second Barbara.
Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. For our information technology agenda, there is one item. Can I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved Li Wu.
By Li Wu, second by Todd. Is there any discussion?
Dana, I have a question. Yeah, and now I am raising my hand. I I was just wondering, is would this number have been different if we were not in the remote learning environment? Because I know we were already on the path to one to one. So is this the same number we would have ordered anyway, or is this different?
Dr. Valeski, I'm muted.
Sorry, it it is the same number. We have planned to roll out technology to the entire population of Churchill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Abstain, motion carries. On our staff development agenda, we have one item. Can I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu, second by Todd. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Abstain, motion carries. For our student services agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through four?
So moved.
Moved by Barbara?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? Dr. Valeski, I'm on the spot again, but I do have a question about item number two.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, clubs, activities, athletic academic teams. I'm not going to ask you to look into your crystal ball and tell us what it's going to look like for next year. But I would like to get a few thoughts from you on how our extracurricular program that was able to run virtually this spring. How'd it go?
We had, you know, honestly, our our clubs and activities continued right along in a virtual environment after we closed schools, parallel to what we were doing instructionally in the academics area. So it was also an opportunity for students to continue to expand their 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 touch with the school, be it, you know, remotely. So it it actually worked as well as we hoped it would. But I will tell you, nothing, nothing replaces face to face. After being in this remote environment, I think we're all looking forward for the opportunity to get back together. But we're going to have to do that slowly and carefully as as the authorities allow us to. It worked really well and I'm very proud of the entire team for making it happen that way because it wouldn't have happened with a lot of dedicated people putting in the time to make it happen.
If I may add also, Dr. Valeski and Becker, a lot of the parents that I had spoken to during this time had said that they also gave their child a chance to kind of have a normal school feel because a lot of these clubs meant a lot to our kids. And I was, and they were able to continue on. They were very happy that they still had a chance to participate, even if it was virtually in something that they really enjoyed. So that was, that was really positive, some of the comments we got.
Anything we could do to help our kids stay connected? Thank you, Dr. Valeski. I was just curious about the feedback we were getting from having done this for a semester. So is there any other discussion? This is a real call vote. Would the secretary please call the roll?
This is Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax. Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion for item one on our transportation services agenda?
So moved Jeff.
Moved by Jeff?
Second Mark.
Second by Mark? Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Stain, motion carries. We do have three items on old business tonight. Have a motion for items three under old dis-
So moved.
Moved by Mark?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, is Rachel still with us or did she?
I'm here.
Rachel. And forgive me if you mentioned during your, what you were saying tonight about your replacement. Who, do you have a sneak preview for us who is going to be our student rep here?
Yeah, he's on the call, actually. His name is Tony. He's the new NHS president also. So I'm sure he's going to do a great job. You guys will love him. Yeah, it'll be very exciting.
And you have a final report for us tonight?
Yes, I do. So this week, the seniors dropped off all their things and it was a really smooth process. Kids were in and out. They were able to social distance. We saw some of our teachers and counselors said goodbye to them. So that was nice. And then we appreciated the gift of like the East Brunswick Mask in Kefan. We are also ready for virtual graduation. A lot of us are making friends with friends just to like have a group of people who we were close to in high school to watch that together with. We are also in NHS hosting the food drive with the East Brunswick Class Council and Student Councils. So that's every Saturday in June from ten to two right by Panera. And you should all definitely donate, especially now a lot of people are struggling with unemployment. And so getting that food on the table is really important to them. And if you can help, that would be a great thing to do. Yeah, that's basically everything. I just want to thank all of you again for being so great and supportive this year, especially given all these uncertain circumstances. It was all handled really well, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Are there any committee reports, information items, good of the cause of the board? I had one, our senior award night was held and virtually. And I wanted to congratulate all of the students who recognized for their incredible accomplishments. Can't even count how many scholarships were given out. And also congratulate their parents. Children don't just happen. You have a lot to be proud of. And we offer our congratulations for continued success. And to all the teachers and staff and administrators who took part in the event. Van Allen and his entire team for help getting it put together. Greatly appreciate it. And congratulations, seniors.
Susanna, so I I heard Rachel say that Tony's the new student rep who's on tonight and typically we get to hear or see, hear from them at least. I'm wondering if he is on, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. Hello, my name's Tony. I'm not allowed to turn my video on if opportunity. But I can still introduce myself. Yeah, as Rachel said, I'm Tony. I will be taking over as liaison to the Board of Education for the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one school year. I'm hope I hope I'm as good as Rachel and I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm really excited for this opportunity. I have a lot to share and yeah, I'm really excited to work with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Look forward to meeting you. I want you to know we're a really fun group. These meetings are very, a lot of fun and very exciting and you will look forward to them.
Do meetings are that fun, really?
We are a fun group.
Okay, just was checking.
Fun meetings compared to some I've been on.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is there any other, Susanna, thank you for bringing Tony into the family, so to speak. Any other committee reports, information items of good of the cause for the board? Seeing none, we do have a need for closure.
Lori's hands.
That's okay. I know she's not used to be talking since I hate Zoom.
I'm sorry, Laura?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know I hate Zoom, but so you didn't see me. I just wanted to to say goodbye to Rachel to thank you because sadly, in a perfect world, she'd be sitting around the dance for us, we'd be able to give her hugs and wish her well in college and I really enjoyed your reports. They were so thorough, but yet I couldn't, I couldn't get enough. I never wanted them to end. You gave us such an incredible view into the high school and all the goings on. Tony, you have very, very big shoes to fill. So welcome, we look forward to that. And I hope you guys enjoy your summer. Rachel, we wish you the best. And again, it's also bittersweet. All the people we've honored today, we should have been with you. The retirees, that's one of my favorite bittersweet events of the year is the EDA retirement dinner. So I just wanted again, say thank you to everybody, wishing everybody well, safety, good health, and that's it.
Jeff?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, there was no resolution, but I want to definitely give recognition to the parents in this community who got thrown into this as much as the students had with the with the stay at home. I I, as a parent of entirely too many children, I I recognize what you all did and it's it's an amazing thing. And I think the parents have a lot to be proud of that they were able to get their kids and work with them through this. I know a lot of homeschooling. I I think a lot of parents learned how to do math again and it was exciting. So I appreciate it and I definitely appreciate the communication from many of the parents throughout this entire process. So hats off to you guys. You really, we did it. So it's good.
Well said, Jeff. Thanks for bringing that up. Anyone else? Seeing none, we do have a close, need for closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. And whereas these subjects are often within the, are within the exception to the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items on this evening's agenda. Length of the closed session is estimated to be sixty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action will not be taken. I please have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved by Li Wu.
Moved by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Stain? Motion carries. Thank you so much for those of you who joined us tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Come back and see us again. Board members, I just remind you when you leave this meeting to please log into the closed session Zoom meeting. Good night, everyone, and stay safe.
Good night.